Okay, folks, it's five o'clock. My understanding, we are now broadcasting live on cam. So I think I will call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for March 18th, 2020. We are going to forego the national, I'm not going to ask, the we're all remote today. And just to address that, this is a unique meeting because I think it's the first time that we've held a totally remote Board of Selectmen meeting. What I'd like to do is start by a roll call of the members of the Board of Selectmen to see and ensure that all are online. And if they're not all online, we know who is not online. So this is Richard Valancourt.
Chris Nobley.
Rosemary Smedeely.
Colagero.
Regina Keen.
Okay, so I will declare that a unanimous quorum of members of the board. So thank you all for joining today. And thank you to the members of the town staff for for being available as well. And also thank you to North End of a Cam and North End of our IT for being able to put together this type of remote meeting. Again, this is unprecedented times that we're living in now. And we're all practicing social distancing and not trying to gather in any one place. But we still have the business of the town to conduct. So we are here and doing the best we can with what we have. And I think tools that we have are very good. And we're ready to proceed. So I'm going to just put my agenda here and get started. Okay, so first on the agenda, we'll be the approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2020. So just so the members of the board know, all votes tonight will be by roll call. So I'll hear a motion. Please identify yourself by making the motion before you make the motion. And then if you second the motion, please identify yourself and then we'll do a roll call vote. We will go.
Rosemary Smedeely, approval of the minutes of March 9th, 2020, open session minutes as written. Regina Keen, second.
Okay, I think I heard Regina Keen, second. Okay, so Rich, so any discussion on the minutes from March 9th? Hearing none. I will vote Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeely, yes.
Chris Nobley, yes.
Phil Decollagero, yes.
Regina Keen, yes.
Okay, so we'll probably kind of use that, that ordering. So I've got myself, Rosemary, Chris, Phil, and Regina. We'll use that ordering since that was kind of like the default ordering. So we'll use that ordering going forward to keep things simple. Okay, so under new business, we have an update on COVID-19. We're fortunate enough tonight to have our Director of Board of Health and also the Chair of the Board of Health, Dr. McMillan, and Brian LaGrasse with us on, actually, for those opposite, Lee. The Director of the Board of Health, Brian LaGrasse, and the Chair of the Board of Health, Dr. Frank McMillan, with us on the call tonight, as well as our Town Manager. So we've had, we've seen a number of announcements come out. And hopefully, we're trying to keep them all straight. And hopefully, we can follow them and do the best, make the best choices for ourselves and our families. But I think it's important that we have an update from the folks that are really, you know, that their boots are on the ground and are working this every day. So Brian and Dr. McMillan, I'm going to hand it to you if you'd like to give an update. And also, Town Manager, if you'd like to give an update as well.
Mr. Chair, this is the Town Manager. If you don't mind, I'll start with just a town update and then we can hand it over to the Board of Health if that works for you.
That's perfect.
Okay, so at the current time, as of today, we do have two positive cases of COVID-19. They are both in the same household. The town has formed a joint task force on COVID-19, which is meeting bi-weekly. All town buildings are closed until at least March 30th. That timeline will be evaluated by the task force weekly. All town events and permits are canceled through April 7th. The schools are closed until April 7th. The COVID-19 hotline is up and running. It is manned live during work hours in groups of three with sufficient social distancing. The number for that hotline is 978-208-6070. We have a COVID-19 email and website available. All non-essential employees are telecommuting and coming in as needed in small groups. Residents can call the COVID-19 hotline to get general information about the illness, speak with the public health nurse if they've been exposed to a confirmed case, inquire about town services, request assistance due to lack of food or supplies, or request personal support. The warrant is still open and will be open until March 23rd at 4:30. Warrant articles can be placed in the drop box outside Town Hall. DPW is working in Skeleton Cruise. Police have gone to a virtual roll call. Mails for schools and other residents will be available starting tomorrow and given out to libraries. There is a link to sign up on the COVID-19 website. If you don't have access to a computer, you can call the hotline at 978-208-6070 during regular work hours and we will enter your order for you. If you need a mail on Monday, you need to call on Friday. We will have delivery for homebound residents or those without cars. There is a sign-up sheet on the town website for those who want to donate goods. We have a frequently asked question available on the website. We are requesting residents not visit our town playgrounds because we cannot sanitize them in between play visits. We continue to urge social distancing. All of our restaurants and bars have received a letter or have mailed a letter reminding them about the Governor's Executive Order for takeout only or delivery only. So those letters are all being delivered to remind people about that. We are using precautions at 911. So if you call 911, you are being asked questions about your state of well-being as well as any travel. Thank you.
Wow, that was quite a bit of information in a very short period of time. So as you've said, that's all posted online on the website.
Yes, we just did a robo-call as well as an email about 15 minutes ago with additional information.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for all those updates. And again, all the town employees that have been putting in so much time and making so many sacrifices to get everything set up for that. So thank you. I'd like to turn now to the Board of Health. So Dr. McMillan and Brian LaGrasse, if we could get an update with what you'd like to provide with us tonight.
Hi, thanks, this is Brian LaGrasse. So just want to give you guys an update. Melissa said most of it. So what we're doing as a local health department is we are monitoring the spread of the virus. We are in constant contact with local health departments in the area as well as the state. We are keeping tabs on any information coming in in terms of testing, as well as any potential concerns or people that need to be isolated. We are meeting with the town officials, police, fire, Town Manager on a regular basis. We have actually completed fit testing of all of the firefighters. So the EMTs are all protected if they have any type of medical calls. We are answering residents' questions and working with businesses. We have worked with all the restaurants and given them guidance on the criteria they can work under. We are also working with long-term care, daycare facilities. We're assisting with press releases and emergency operations and procedures for Town Hall and manning the hotline and answering questions for residents on a regular basis.
Okay, this is Frank McMillan, I'll go next. So just, just some general information about this, about this virus. It's spread by droplets, not so much by aerosol. So the most important thing, the CDC has published something called the Hierarchy of Protection. And if you Google upside-down triangle, CDC, hierarchy of protection, you'll see it. The most important thing, or the most effective thing, is removing yourself from the threat. The least effective part of that triangle is personal protective equipment. So the most, the message I want to get out tonight is hand washing, social distancing, and personal protection equipment, masks and things like that are the least effective things. So if you see people walking around with masks, they're much better off washing their hands and not touching their face to adjust their mask.
Okay. Well, thank you both for those updates and all three of you, actually, same Melissa as well, thank you. Any questions from the board before we move forward?
Yes, this is Phil Decollagero. What are we doing in our fire stations where we have ships of men and women coming in and out after 24 hours, spending a good deal of time together, going back with their families, another ship coming in? Are we, what are we doing, or if anything?
Right now, all of our firefighters are staying upstairs to limit their interactions with any public who might be coming in, although at this point, the doors are completely locked and you do have to call for an appointment at the fire department as well. But they are staying upstairs, not intermingled with any staff or employees or anyone. They are using strict protocols for going into houses. So asking people before they go in whether or not they've been ill, checking out people's symptoms before they go in in collaboration with 911 to make certain that if we're sending people into a home where there are symptoms of COVID-19, that they are going in, wearing the appropriate preventative gear. Brian, do you want to add to that?
So I know that I've been working with the chief on ship isolations, as well as limiting overtime shifts between each crew and each station. So I've been talking about it, he's working with the union on isolating overtime shifts, which is one of the big ones because guys go between the different stations, depending on the shift they're doing overtime for. So that's been bone of contention for a little bit and kind of working on how to limit that and eliminate that from their shifts.
One other thing, this is Frank McMillan, and I'm not telling anybody how to do their job, but I can tell you what our experience is working at the hospital because we have the same exact problem. We have physicians and nurses congregating in order to provide services, whether that's in the emergency room or the operating room. And what we've done is, is at the beginning of every shift, as people come into the building, is we're do it administering a screening questionnaire that is very simple. Do you have a fever? Do you have a cough? Do you have a runny nose? Are you sneezing? Have you been exposed to somebody with COVID-19? And if the answer is yes, you're being deferred and turned around. Now you also, that can be very simply done by the ship commander as somebody comes into the ship. The other thing is, is it should be made clear to any public safety and all of us as well is that if you have any of those symptoms, if you feel that you could be spreading it, you have a duty and a responsibility to take yourself out. And the leadership needs to plan on making sure that there are adequate people to staff.
Okay.
Rosemary Smedeely, Dr. McMillan, could you state the name of that upside-down hierarchy website that you mentioned a few moments ago?
Yes, it's, it's called the Hierarchy of Protection and it's on the CDC website. And it's the same upside-down triangle that you'll find in OSHA. And basically, the same things that protect you from a health standpoint, protect you from a work standpoint. The most important thing is, is removing yourself from the risk. You'll see that at the top of the pyramid and at the bottom of the pyramid, whether it's a medical setting or whether it's an OSHA work setting, it's personal protective equipment. And the things at the top of the list are the most effective and the things at the bottom of the list are the least effective. I think we're focusing a lot on PPE when actually we should be making sure that we're not exposing ourselves in the first place. It's much better to not expose somebody than to try to protect them from an exposure.
Dr. McMillan, touching back on that, what you stated were symptoms that people need to be aware of. So is it all of them or one of them or a combination thereof, I suppose?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, but it's really one. If you have any of those, you could be at risk. And the problem is, is that there's an overlap with things that are not COVID. You know, I mean, there's, people get post-nasal drip, some people have COPD and they cough a lot. I mean, that's the unfortunate reality, but those people should not be mingling with others, at least right now. And so we get further along in this epidemic. What we're not doing really is containing at this point. We're just trying to slow the spread. And that's the unfortunate place that we're at right now. It's in, it may or may not be in this community. We're still debating that, but we don't have the testing to know for certain. And since we don't have that, the safest thing is to have, you know, basically what we just said, don't put yourself at risk, maintain the isolating behaviors. And, and when you are in the situations, maintain a distance of six feet, I think is recommended, and make sure that you wash your hands after touching surfaces, touching doorknobs, use soap and water when it's available, alcohol-based sanitizers when it's not. You know, the, even myself, I was guilty today. I went to a construction site and I shook a hand of a contractor and I'm like, what the hell did I just do? I have Purell in the car, exactly the type of thing that you want to have not happen. So we all have to train ourselves how to think differently and how to behave differently. And that's the unfortunate situation we're in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, the next item on the agenda is we need to delegate. So we've received a open meeting, open meeting violation complaint. We need to designate someone to look into that complaint and deal with that complaint. Normally, I believe in Town Manager, you can chime in here. Normally, it would be the Town Attorney that would do that. And I fully support that decision. But, Town Manager, do you want to chime in here a little bit?
Sure, Suzanne's here with us as well. So we have received, as you know, a complaint that we violated the open meeting law. And so what happens is the first step is that we delegate that complaint to Town Council to answer. And so she's here today and she can certainly tell you more about the process than I'm sure I can.
Yes, so good evening, Board members. The process for responding to an open meeting law complaint is as follows. The Board has to review the complaint at a public meeting. And then it has the, as Town Manager stated, has the authority to delegate the response to Town Counselor or another staff person. The open meeting law complaint that was submitted and to the town is a complaint that states that it's against the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, and Town Attorney. As you know, the open meeting law only applies to multi-member boards and not individual employees or public officials. And I will respond as such to the complainant and also the division of the open meeting law. The complaint also mentions a number of dates on which meetings took place. I've reviewed the Board of Selectmen's posted agendas and minutes on your website. And in most instances, the dates are a little off by a couple of days. I believe she's referring to certain Board of Selectmen meetings that are a couple of days off. So I will respond with that note and also showing, providing to the complainant a copy of the minutes and a copy of the agenda for the meetings that were complained of.
Okay, and what's our timeframe for getting that done?
It is 14 business days from the day that the complaint is submitted. And it was sent in via email on March 7th. So that's March 24th.
So we'll have no problem getting that response to that before then, right? Okay. Okay, so then I think we need a motion, unless anybody has any questions, let me stop there. Let me pause there for a minute. Anybody, any questions from the board before we move to a motion?
Move, this is Chris Nobley. Move that the Board of Selectmen delegate to the Town Council the authority to respond to the open meeting law complaint submitted by Karen Laro on March 7th, 2020.
Oh, thank you. Smedeely, second.
Yeah, motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, I'll get the, I'll get the roll call started, Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeely, yes.
Lee, yes.
Phil Decollagero, yes.
Regina Keen, yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. And good job remembering the order too, that was very impressive. Okay, so that's a unanimous call, so we'll look forward to an update on that in the near future. Okay, let's move to our next item on the agenda. Let me get it back up. So this is a discussion on whether our petition to delay, whether to petition to delay the election on March 31st, 2020 to some date in the future. So, Town Manager, do you want to kick this off?
Sure, I'd be happy to. As you know, we do have an election coming up on March 31st. At this time, the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, the Health Director, and the Emergency Management Director are recommending that the Board of Selectmen authorize Town Council to either file special legislation or petition for a court order to delay that election. If that does happen, the current selectmen and school committee members would remain in their seats until the election is held. Due to the nature of this public health emergency, the declared state of emergency at the state and federal levels, the guidance by the CDC to not have gatherings of more than 10 people, our own guidance on social distancing, and the general seriousness of this illness, we collectively feel that it is not in the best interest of the community or of our employees. Move forward with the election at this time. The way that we currently have the motion drafted, the new election will be held by June 30th or when the Governor lifts his state of emergency, whichever occurs first. To be very clear, we're, we're very concerned about the population of employees that we generally have work in election, which is often our more vulnerable population. And in addition, that the employees who typically come to those elections are also our most vulnerable population. And it is a little bit nerve-wracking to think of having all those people together in the high schools on the same day. And that's where we are right now as the administration.
Mr. Chair, Regina Keen, referring to Chapter 268A, I will recuse myself from this conversation as I have a financial interest in whether or not the election occurs as planned.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Valancourt, Chris Nobley here. And I appreciate a moment here and for the same consideration and because I'm a candidate in the coming election, I feel it's prudent and further, after talking to Town Council and Town Manager, recuse myself from the discussion as well as the vote. I do want to say though, serving the past three years, I've seen the intelligence, the expertise in the heart of each member of the board. It's well-proven and I have full confidence in my fellow Select Board members that you'll determine the best choice for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two recusals from the board, but we still have a quorum with three of us. So I guess, Town Manager, some questions that I have. I mean, are we certain that, that we cannot provide? The first question I have is, what is the date or how, what's the last date that we could actually petition the court to postpone the election? And I'm saying this because I'd like to understand if there are ways that we can, because this is a big move. Postponing the election is a big one. As, as a lot of things, you know, have been unprecedented over the last week. So I'm not, you know, I think it's certainly something that we have to very, very highly consider. And so the question is, what's the last date that we could petition the court to postpone the election? And can we potentially talk about ways that we could safeguard the public by maybe doing some early voting, some remote, or some remote voting, I should say absentee voting? Can we use the size of the high school, since the high school is not being currently used by the, by the students? Can we use the size of the high school to practice social, social, you know, social distancing, sorry? Can we, you know, provide everybody with their own pen? I mean, just simple things are the things that we can do that we can, as opposed to taking a step today to postpone the election? Can we look into some possibilities where we can provide a safe environment for the election to move forward on the, on the given date? And still have time if we decide that that's not going to work at all? If we cannot get any of that to work, is it, what would be the drop-in date that we could petition the court to move the election?
So I guess, this is the Town Manager, I, I don't think that there's any way that I can guarantee the safety of the public or the employees, whether we're.
Community safety was not a good word to use, maybe it's more.
So, you know, regardless of whether or not we spread out within the building, which I think the school department may have an issue with, because that would have people kind of more spread out, doing potential affecting in more places besides just one room. I think that no matter.
We could take the gym and we could petition that into three precincts right there. I mean, we could have three precincts right in the gym.
We can certainly spread out in the gym. But regardless of that, no matter what, we are going to have members of the public interacting directly with our employees. We're going to have to hand them documents, they're going to have to hand things back to us. They're going to be touching our equipment. So I don't think there's any way that I can guarantee or even think that I can begin to make any type of guarantees about safety. If the Board is, is insistent on going on with the election, what we would do is probably not have any of the election workers, unfortunately, because I think the liability of doing that is, is too high. We would staff the election with employees only, which is difficult because they're also the people who are still keeping our town services going at this point. We would only allow 10 residents in the high, into the auditorium at a time. We would space them outside in a line every six feet with tape on the ground to make sure that social distancing is still happening. Town employees would wear masks, gloves, and other protective gear. You know, that's what we're talking about here. Obviously, the operations of the election fall to the Chief Election Officer. So she would be the one to make these final determinations on the safety of the election, how we would manage it. But that would be my recommendation to her. And those are the conversations that we've been having internally if the election has to go on. Obviously, we've seen many other communities over the last few days discussing whether or not to delay the election. I know that Andover delayed last night. I believe Needham was having a discussion today. Several other communities have done it. They have been able to get their orders relatively quickly. However, we have seen more evidence that the courts are doing less hours than they were doing before. So time-wise, I think, you know, time is more BS now than it was even just days ago. You know, some, I think notices came out from the trial court just today about reduced hours. So is it possible? Yes, are we advising it? Certainly not.
Okay, so I think you answered my question. So you've already thought through many of the things that I mentioned. You've already thought these through and you're still coming back with the proposal to postpone the election. So that's.
And I met with Jeff Coco today to discuss this with him as well, and Brian LaGrasse too, to kind of say, you know, is it possible? And Jeff Coco has worked, what he said to me was elections here for over 20 years, in that he would be very concerned with the safety of residents and employees going forward.
So my, I'm really conflicted about this, but I want to preface this by saying my, my feeling of confliction is as an elected official in that I appreciate the Town Manager's doing her job. And I think that this is a recommendation based on the very values for why we hired you, right? I mean, you're assessing the situation and I think that your recommendation is, if it makes sense, it's valid and I, and I, but respectfully, I disagree. But I disagree because of the position I'm coming from, which is there are elected officials in this community. And everything that this community does stems from the decisions that those voters make. And I'm, I'm just uncomfortable taking, maybe it's symbolic, but for me, it's a really big leap to take the step of suspending an election. And especially, I don't want to use the term indefinitely, but what are the things that we would need to see? And this is more, I think, for the three of us as selectmen that are voting. What are things that we would need to see for us to feel comfortable? What things would need to change for us to want to hold this election? What things need to change for us to decide if we do postpone it? These are the conditions that we need to be living in in order for us to feel comfortable with when it should be held. Sit on that and chew on that because my follow-up to that statement is also, of course, we don't get to make this decision, we're making a request. But people elect us to make certain decisions. And in that interim, our board will continue to have to make decisions. And in part, forty percent of that board hypothetically will be weighing in on decisions. And I really, I very much value the partnership of my two colleagues, assistants about them as individuals. It's just the principle of the two seats. Votes will be made by individuals who were not elected by voters because we advocated removing voters from the process. So, there are a lot of, actually, a lot of thoughts. I guess that was a long winded excellent. I have a lot more thoughts, but I want to give an opportunity for the town manager or selectman Valencourt, selectman Smedili to weigh in.
Well, this is Rosemary Smedili. My first election was postponed for two weeks because of a terrible snowstorm. So I have real experience in that. The decision was made out of the health and well being of the community to get to the polls. It seemed like a long time when you're a candidate, but actually, it went quite smoothly. And I think it helped with the turnout. My only question would be this. Can we revisit it, say, every two weeks? I know the town of Andover, they did get their approval. It seemed to turn pretty quickly. You know, every two weeks or every three weeks, can we revisit it? And maybe not necessarily tie it completely into the emergency situation, but gauge how we're moving along in this dreadful process, unfortunately. But the end of June does seem pretty far out. But at the end of the day, it is the health and well being of the community and our staff and everybody else. But I'm just wondering if we could have intervals of reviewing it to see if there's a way that we can perhaps do it that would make it safe and not hurt turnout. I think turnout's important. For some of the same reasons that Phil described. You know, we, we want a, a good and fair election, but turnout is, is important as well. So. So that, that was for the town manager.
Well, I wanted to, so you said that was, there was a snowstorm? Because I, I know that someone referenced it on social media and I just wanted to make sure that I, I, they said there was a storm. I just wanted to make sure that I, I interpreted that correctly. There was a snowstorm that delayed your election?
It was a very bad snowstorm. And the decision was made by the chair of the board at that time. It was my first election. So, I do remember it well.
This is Melissa. Yes, we certainly could revisit it every meeting to recall the election. So we could have a recurring agenda item every two weeks at our regularly scheduled with a select a meeting where we would discuss whether or not it was now time to call the election and then call it.
Okay, that certainly seems a little bit, just, I'm a little bit more comfortable with that than then sort of leaving it wide open or I suppose, you know, again, just weighing the situation in our town.
So my, I hear, and I, I think that when there's a natural disaster like that or something of that type of magnitude, that suddenly it's like a snowstorm, I can see why, right? All of a sudden, you know, people literally can't even go to operate the polls. We have thirteen days to start encouraging people to vote by absentee. And every single person, because of this emergency declaration, have a legal excuse for wanting to avoid the polls. And so they can make the request for an absentee ballot, get that absentee ballot delivered. They can go and fill out that absentee ballot and submit it back, all without interacting with another human being. I don't, I'm not versed enough in the absentee ballot law to know if options like that existed in general back in two thousand, but certainly they wouldn't have been able to utilize them even if they did. Because right if a snowstorm hits and you're given twenty four hour notice before an election or even forty eight hour notice, that's not enough time to really get the whole absentee ballot process into motion. Whereas, you know, we've now been advocating social distancing for well over a week. And we now have a dozen days to be educating the public, you know, exercise good voting and social distancing by simply requesting an absentee ballot. We did show the flexibility in two thousand twelve by suddenly moving locations from the high school to the middle school when this, the gymnasium floor was, the fieldhouse floor was damaged by water. And so I, I don't even see why we couldn't set up different precincts at different literal locations, right? Because we're going to have to educate the public either way. If we cancel this election, we have to be very thorough because I think that it is an injustice if just one person shows up on March thirty first thinking that it's election day. They shouldn't, right? If we're telling them they shouldn't leave their house, this is the schedule they were told. So we'll have to do a public outreach campaign regardless of what we decide this evening and what the court or the state decides on our, at our request. But I think about, you know, we have ample time to plan and prep people, those people especially who don't want to go out to vote absentee. And it also doesn't have us running the risk of, well, let's wait to see what conditions are like two weeks, four weeks, two months down the road, because conditions might not change. And I know that that sounds awful, but right, I've read articles from legitimate publications today that suggest it could last as long as eighteen months. And so I, I just get concerned, again, about our, our authority is derived from the will of the voters. And this is a very uncomfortable precedent to set when we know that there are options that can exist where people can exercise their civic right and we can maintain democratic norms with ample notice to them.
Great, well said, Phil. Can I just jump in here?
Sure.
So we don't, we have a meeting coming up on Monday of this, of this coming week. We certainly can revisit this discussion on that date. That should hopefully still give us enough time to make the motion or get the court petition if we decide at that point. My suggestion could be that we huddle together again with the, with the folks, the emergency management, the town hall, town clerk, and, you know, discuss and try to understand all possible avenues that we could. And I know you've already done it and I know, you know, you've come back with, with a recommendation here. But just given the discussion tonight and the, you know, really the gravity of the decision, can we take another look at it and see if there's a way, as Phil had said, you know, to use absentee balloting to try to get those out and back? I mean, it seems a stretch to do that in just a week and a half to get the ballots out and back again without, you know, in time for the election. But is it a possibility that we could revisit this on Monday? And maybe, you know, see if we exhausted all avenues? Maybe we can talk to the school department and see if they'd be willing to let us use different parts of the school to, to poll in those different parts of the schools. We could use different entrances, different, different precincts if we had to. Like I said, it's a big school and maybe Phil had suggested using more than one polling location. Maybe poll one through four down at the middle school and the others as we used to do. And then the others up at the high school and separate as much as possible. I think there's some good ideas that have been thrown out. I'd hate to just stop it here tonight if we can, you know, maybe put some more thought into it and maybe think about what, what other options we might have. And this is a very important part of our democratic process to move forward with. And I also, but as I'm saying that, I also like Rosemary's idea of, you know, coming back every other meeting or every meeting and, and saying, okay, are we ready to go now? But, so those are my, my thoughts. I'm manager.
So I would just ask, go ahead, Rosemary, do you want to go first? Sorry.
Well, Rosemary Smedili, I think what our chairman said and what I said can actually work well together. I think it would be quite rushed to do, get that absentee in place, especially with people who are not on the internet and how they would get ahold of those absentee ballots without having to come into town hall. So I think the two together would be, I think we need a little bit more time to plan to see if we can make this happen and not affect in a very big way voter turnout. It will be affected, I'm sure, but so I think maybe, maybe at least putting it off another meeting or two before we make our final decision to see what we can do to make this happen in a timely fashion. Madam Town Manager, I guess I'd like your input on that. And if you strongly feel that though, that this, that this is, could potentially be harmful to the health and well being of our citizens, I certainly would like to hear that again. Or do you need a little bit more time to see if we can put all of this together?
Sure, so I don't know if Brian or Frank are still on the line and want to weigh in as well about the risk. But I, I don't think I could more, I don't think I could be any more clear about my concern about the risk for the employees and the staff. Whether we're separated and we've got one person coming in or five people coming in, right now, our doors are closed because we don't want our staff interacting with the public. By having the election in two weeks, we are forcing our staff to interact with the public en masse, which is very dangerous as I was just hearing the update from Frank and Brian on the last item. I think that if we don't make a decision today, we are going to force the town clerk to have to move forward with absentee ballots immediately. We have skeleton crews, we have one person coming in at a time in the town clerk's office. We will not allow anyone to come in and vote over the counter. So all absentee ballots will have to be mailed and then mailed back. Right? And in a less than two week period, when typically when we have people who request absentee ballots, they often come to the counter to request their absentee ballots and then fill them out. Unfortunately, that won't be an option in this election. They will have to be mailed and then mailed back or left in the drop box outside.
So why couldn't we as a community? I mean, because we've still not heard what we need to identify as the barometer, right? What's the trigger to allow us to have an election, right? I mean, what, conceivably, this could last for months. In fact, the trajectory run is it's only getting worse. And so how many months are we punting on this? Where we continue to say, and it's true, employees would end up being exposed. So why wouldn't we then marry this to supporting aggressive absentee balloting? Or, I mean, if we're asking the courts to weigh in on this anyways, why not ask if we can go mail only? I mean, we're changing things anyways. We have to aggressively educate the public no matter what. Why wouldn't we do that then?
I think, I think that's a good point, Phil. And maybe, maybe we don't have the time right now to fully play that out if we were going to, if we were going to do a full mail in or absentee type ballot election. Because as the, as the chair, as the town manager said, we, we would have to start that today and we're not really geared up for that with the crew that we have on. But maybe if we postponed or talked about postponing for a couple of weeks, we could put that in place and start mailing those ballots out and start, and start collecting those back and using that process.
But I'd. I mean, that would, I, I would rather if we're going, because what we've discussed right now is suspending and then seeing how things play out. That's, when you really take a step back, that is a huge undermining of the very principle of, again, the democracy. Every single thing we do as a community stems from decisions that voters make at the ballot box. If we are going to postpone an election and not actually identify what it is that would need to happen for us to be able to reschedule it, then that's a huge problem. I would rather see us leave this meeting tonight if that's the will of this board to postpone it, to say, okay, well, we're going to postpone it X number of weeks out. So that will give us the time to be able to put together ballots to mail to every single one of the registered voters in North Andover and educate them on the fact that we will not be opening a polling place at all. So that way we aren't putting our actual employees at risk and instead have everybody mail in their ballots. Because right now, we're simply discussing putting off what we have to do anyways. We're not actually discussing, we've not laid out any scenario where this would have to be how the world looks in order for us to call the election back up, which is in of itself concerning. So if we think that we, if people are concerned about employees interacting with the public, then what this discussion needs to be more about is what do we need to do to make sure our employees don't have to interact with the public, period, during this election? And how many weeks, perhaps we won't need any time. But if we need time, how much time would we need in order to get that in place? Because, I mean, again, you, future boards could choose to make requests to cancel elections then all the time at that point. And it's just, I mean, we, we have to put some real actual safeguards and benchmarks in place. And I don't think that we are, any of us, I don't think the nation is even necessarily in a position to put the benchmark in place for, you know, we'd want X number of viruses to only be happening before we actually go and call an election. Because I would imagine that for quite some time, we're only going to be going up. I don't imagine the next time we will have fewer than two COVID positives in our community. So I just, I feel very uncomfortable as a selectman. And I'm, my term isn't up, but I am very uncomfortable as a selectman asking that our election be postponed and not actually know what we're asking the governor or the courts to say, you know, is when we would hold it. That's just my strong, strong feeling.
I just, I just want to mention just one thing. The, on the administration side, we certainly don't think we're, we're punting in any way, shape, or form, and that's not our intent. You know, this, I think, is worse than a snowstorm, worse than a debris storm, worse than many of the other things that we've ever seen in the past because we're in a state of emergency over public health. On an illness that we don't fully understand, that's contagious, right? So we all understand what we have to do in a snowstorm. We all understand what we have to do in a debris storm. We're working day to day to try to understand this illness. And so, you know, I don't see us as punting, we're asking for time. And in our, in our motion, it actually says that the election would be either June thirtieth or when the governor lifts the state of emergency, whichever is first. And so that could be our benchmark. Our benchmark could be the lifting of the state of emergency, which means that the state as a whole is now safe. And I think that that's a fair benchmark. I would be very open to revisiting it every two weeks, looking at our numbers, looking at what we're hearing from the governor and from the CDC. But I'm not comfortable today asking our employees to endanger themselves in this way.
So why not, not put them in, I mean, again, June thirtieth may not be better. In fact, again, all evidence suggests that it will be at, at best, the same as we're in today. And so why wouldn't we at this point start talking about, are there ways that we can execute this election? Other states in this country literally do it where it is no contact from state, or excuse me, local employees. It is all mail absentee only. And while I understand that right now it is unprecedented, I mean, we, it actually is unprecedented for us because, I mean, as a modern generation, we're not accustomed to dealing with things. We've literally gone through elections through world wars. We've gone through elections through past pandemics. We've literally held a presidential election as we've conducted a civil war in this country. I mean, this is not, suspending an election is a big deal at any level. Again, barring a natural disaster, that right becomes an unforeseen set of circumstances. I mean, we're literally talking right now about a possibility where we could hold this election. On a day, it doesn't have to be the thirty first that the deadline is, but we could hold an election where every single one of our voters, in fact, it would actually be in franchising, could be mailed a ballot. And so I would love to get that type of feedback about when, I mean, is it postponing it two weeks, but with the, the request that we'd like to postpone it two weeks so that we could mail every one of our residents an absentee ballot? Since the state has asked that we not social gather and of course, the very act of showing up to vote is a violation of that request. Why can't we, why can't that be then part of the ask? And I don't know if that's a cost prohibitive request, but, I mean, guarantees that our employees never have to interact regardless of where we're at in June thirtieth. Our employees won't ever have to interact with the public and risk being exposed.
This is Rosemary Smedili. I think the concern that I have right off the bat is mailing everybody an absentee ballot and not knowing who has access to that ballot and perhaps doing things that are inappropriate or just illegal. I have real concerns about that as well. When you mail them all out, you know, I think you run the risk that there'll be people who will be double, triple voting depending on what came in the mail.
Other states have to mail, mail in voting though, and.
I tend to agree with Rosemary, Phil. I think, I don't think we're there yet. I think it's something that we, is coming, but I think to try to implement that in the next few weeks or the next couple of months might be a stretch. I think it's definitely, you know, something that's coming, right? Online voting, maybe just total remote. Online voting, uh maybe just total re- remote um faceless voting, but right now, I don't know that we're there, right? You see, we don't know that we have that process in place that would support that.
It's, it's pretty, I mean, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. Other states and localities in this country do it.
We do, but, you know, being an engineer and working in in, I know that there's things that other companies do that look pretty simple, but when you try to implement it in your own environment, it gets a little bit difficult because there's a lot of hooks in there. So I'm just saying that, um, you know, I think that it's not a bad, it's a good idea, but I just think we need to, I don't know that we're in a position today to start implementing or to put that kind of a process in place.
I agree, Mr. Chair. Therefore, um I make a motion that um we revisit this at our next meeting, um and discuss it and um have the town manager work with us to try to see if we can find something, a happy medium, that we're not going out till June, but that we um can still um ensure the integrity of everyone's right to vote and ability to vote, along with keeping our our citizens and our staff safe. So I think it's a lot for us to to decide this evening, so that's why I would move that we revisit this um at an, our next meeting or the following meeting to perhaps brainstorm it again.
So to be clear, you're not suggesting that at this point that we postpone the election? You're you're suggesting that we discuss it again on our March 23rd meeting?
Yes, um unless we need to meet earlier to discuss it. Um unless the town manager feels as though, and we just call another meeting. Um I mean, this is important.
I don't, I don't think we have the time to do that, to call another meeting, but I think we'd have to be the
Yeah, you're probably right. I forget today is Wednesday.
There's Wednesday, we're all
Um I still think, oh, from all that we've discussed, I still think we need a little bit more time to decide this than today.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Um Selectman DeColigero, you're the only one that can second that motion.
Um and I I will, um could I offer a friendly amendment? So I would, I have need a second before offering a friendly amendment? That, I don't know, I guess I, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that in the interim, um that over the next two days, we run a robocall to all registered voter, or all residents of North Andover both days, reminding them that they can request absentee ballots for voting, because the ballot isn't changing regardless. Um that they can request absentee ballots, because in the event that the election isn't moved, these voters will still need to have time to get their ballots mailed to them, and then they would need to be able to mail it. So, I mean, I think that we should be doing that anyways, but I I guess I would motion that in the interim until this next discussion, that the town runs a regular reminder, both digitally and also robocall-wise, um reminding residents of the ease of accessing absentee ballots.
Okay, I'd like to get some input from the town manager or the town clerk on that. I, my thought is that those absentee ballots have a date that they need to be returned by, um and if that date is very close, then um, you know, if we do end up postponing, then the, you know, they're going to be returning those ballots early, uh it would become, again, a scramble to to get those out and back because of the dates on the um ballots. It would, I think it would be misleading or at least confusing to the public if we end up postponing and they've already sent those ballots back in because there was a date that they needed to send those in on.
We'll be transmitting all absentee ballot applications with a letter from town council explaining that this ballot will count for either this election or the future election. That was our plan. Um we will certainly promote the use of absentee ballots. However, we do only have one employee at a time in the town clerk's office right now, um and so we will process them as quickly as we can. And out of state, we'll get consideration because um obviously college students, et cetera, have to come from further away to mail them back.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with an amendment to the motion asking that we send a robocall out regarding the absentee ballots. Um so I'll call a roll call, vote on that. Um so I, this is with the amendment, Rosemary, so if you have any issues with the amendment, you let me know. Um so
I'll accept the friendly amendment, and Mr. Chair, I will, I will vote aye.
Okay, Rosemary Smedili was an aye. Richard Valancourt is an aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Okay, so that one passes three-nothing unanimously. Okay, thank you to the town, to the town manager, the town clerk, emergency management director, all the town staff that have worked very hard to put together the proposals. Uh we will talk about it again Monday night and um see where we go from there. Okay, um I'm going to ask the two members that recuse themselves to rejoin, and uh and we'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is the vote on the um possible state of emergency for the town of North Andover. Um Madam Town Manager, can you tell us what that does? If we declare a state of emergency for the town of North Andover, um what exactly does that provide for us?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um so I did meet with Jeff Coco today to review um my request. By law, the town manager can actually um enact a state of emergency on their own, but I'm asking you to join me in this measure because I think it's important in this instance particularly. This is not to scare residents in any manner, but is meant to reiterate to the public the importance of this situation, as we discussed in our earlier agenda item, and also to give the town more resources if we need them in the coming weeks. It gives local officials the capacity to make decisions that we need to make in real time, for instance, shutting down of certain business types or um public facilities. We're able to issue recommendations, directives, and orders as needed, and we're able to spend an excess of appropriation if we need to, which is very important. At least 13 other communities have been recorded as taking this measure so far, with more doing it every day. I was on a call today with over 150 other communities, um where we discussed doing this as well, and it sounds like many of us will be following suit.
Okay. Um so, members of the board, I mean, I I am perfectly fine with this. I think this is a good measure, this is a good step. Um again, we're, we're living in a, a very different world at this point, and I think we need to take every uh measure that we can to be in front of anything that may have, may happen. And if we don't have to call a, a meeting of the board of selectmen and the town manager and her staff and make uh decisions for us based on this emergency, then I think that, you know, gives us the um uh the luxury of time, because we, we're not waiting 48 hours to call a meeting. So I think this is something that, we're liv- we're living in a very fast-changing world, so I think it's something that we really need to consider, and and I'm perfectly uh fine with moving forward with this.
Um well, with that, I'll, I'll um make that motion for you, um as you've just laid out, that um
Okay. All right, Rosemary, we heard you, it was very light, there was some background noise going on. Maybe you could say it again?
Okay, yeah, I, I, okay, let me see if I can um find it in the motion page, but I am not. So I would move at the, at the town manager's recommendation, um that the town of North Andover uh do execute a state of emergency. Um Melissa, do you have, I don't know if you said
I, I found the language. Would you like me to say it?
Um yes, uh the thing I was most concerned about, effective what date?
The 18th today.
Yeah, it'll be effective today. Um Jeff Coco is ready to contact me directly after this vote.
Okay, so I would just like to, I think I can handle that, but thank you, um is to have it effective as today, again, as declaration of um our town manager and emergency manager.
Okay, I think we have a picture going around in the background or something that that washed out, Rosemary, again, but I think the motion has been made. Um do we have a second?
Seconded by Phil DeColigero.
Seconded by Phil. Uh any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Oh, Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
And Richard Valancourt, aye. Um so that passes. Um I would like to ask um the clerk, if you have a copy in front of you, would you care to read the declaration of emergency?
Okay, hold on one moment, please. I do have a copy. Okay, Town of North Andover, Massachusetts Board of Selectmen, declaration of emergency. Whereas on 2019, novel coronus COVID-19 has been declared a public health emergency of international concern by world health organizations, and whereas COVID-19 is a highly contagious and in some cases fatal respiratory disease, and whereas on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency concerning COVID-19 outbreak and has directed the agencies of the national government to take appropriate actions. And whereas on March 10th, 2020, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts declared a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19 and determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to public health and safety and the general welfare of the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and directed the agencies of the state government to take appropriate actions. And whereas the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Andover, Massachusetts, upon advice from the town manager, have determined that the situation poses a present, reasonable, and imminent danger to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of North Andover or their property, so that it has become necessary for the town manager, with such assistance and staff that she deems necessary, to utilize, coordinate the services, equipment, supplies, and facilities of existing departments, offices, and agencies, or the community, both locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally, if necessary, including the taking or ordinary extraordinary actions for the purposes of emergency management and emergency functions to protect the public. And whereas a declaration of emergency and immediate action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of North Andover and/or property which may otherwise result from the above described situation. And whereas the transmission of COVID-19 can be expected to greatly impact the health and welfare of the community of the Town of North Andover. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Andover, Massachusetts, with the authority delegated by Chapter 3, Section 2 of the North Andover Charter, and by the Chief Policy-Making and Rule-Making Authority, hereby declare that as of March 19th, 2020, a state of emergency is declared to exist in North Andover and authorize and directs, under the direction and the management of the town manager, all town personnel and agents to take action appropriate to respond to this situation and ratifies, confirms, and adopt any related action taken prior to the formal adoption of this declaration. This declaration of emergency in the Town of North Andover shall remain in effect until notice is given by the Board of Selectmen and that such state of emergency no longer exists. And that is dated today, March 18th. Town of North Andover Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, um we are currently under a declaration of emergency. All right. Um again, unprecedented times and call for unprecedented actions. Um so we're going to go to old business now. Uh we have one item under old business is to discuss the Amazon proposal. We had presented to us at our last meeting a proposal by the town manager and then a counter offer from the uh from Amazon, and tonight we need to discuss and vote on that so that we can include, if we chose, so choose to do, uh include that on the town warrant. Madam Town Manager, would you like to take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if you remember, at our last meeting, we reviewed um the original offer that the town made to Amazon as well as their counter offer. Tonight, I'm looking on directions so that I can move forward with um the warrant article, which is due on Monday by 4:30. Um you had asked me one question that I unfortunately had not been able to answer at the last meeting. The answer to that question was what that parcel is paying, is paying now, and I explained to you, I think, then, that it's very difficult, because, one, the TIF just ended, two, we're at the appellate tax board, and three, we kind of have to break the parcel out. So what we did was we took the full parcel and basically divided it by the acre, determined that the Amazon parcel will now take up about 90% of that parcel, and figured out that what they pay now is approximately $542,000. I'm going to tell you, this is a crude way to do it. I'm not sure there's a better way, um but that's the number we have right now, so about $542,000. So based on their counter offer, and that's a $30 million offer, we would net $368,000 in year one, increasing annually till year 15, where we would net $2.2 million, and that does not include personal property. Thank you.
And netting it means after the um the contribution um from Amazon to those various um items that we had listed?
Uh no, so what I mean by that is that we would receive $368,000 more than we receive now in taxes on the parcel. So currently, we receive $542,000, we would be receiving 542 plus 368. So the new taxes are 368 in the first year.
Okay. Do, do we have any idea as to what the revenue, what, what that would be for the property? Do we have any, you know, bigger than a breadbox, smaller than a house, I mean, any, any range?
For the personal property, I really, I, I can't, I don't feel like I can answer that, unfortunately. Uh we don't have an idea of what each floor's equipment would look like. Um and so once we do know that, once it's built out, we would then have a professional consultant come in and evaluate that personal property and do an assessment of that. Um unfortunately, that amount does decrease every year rather than increasing, so it's kind of contrary to what we're used to with real estate taxes. It's an annual decrease because the personal property actually depreciates, right? Your equipment is worth less in the second year and the third year. Um so that first year would be the biggest payment, which is good, because it's kind of the opposite of the TIF, right? But as far as how much it would be, I really don't know.
Do we have, just in the question, do we know what some of the other facilities have? Again, just ballpark, uh to extrapolate some scenarios. Can we find
The only other robotic facility they have um is in Massachusetts. I have not seen what their personal property tax bill is. Um in Fall River and in Freetown, their personal property was included in their TIF, so they don't have a valuation for it. Um we are not including it in our TIF, so our TIF is a little bit different. Um so I have not seen a good study of what their personal property is worth, because they've been including it in their TIF in the other communities. I can continue to try to dig that out. Before town meeting, I could try to get at least a list of what their equipment will be, um and then have that ready for town meeting, but it's going to be um a pretty comprehensive look.
Okay. Uh, uh it would just be, again, you know, we're trying to give the citizens here as good a look with all the provisos and, you know, clarifying that, you know, that this is a guesstimate, but I think it's valid just to try and corral some of the expectations and some of the discussion, if we can.
Agreed. We'll do the best we can to get as much information as possible.
Always do.
So we've all had a chance to review the numbers and the, and the proposals and the counter proposals, so um what's the board's opinion on this?
Uh I will, this is Regina Keen. My suggestion or my position is that we should ask our town manager to go back with the potential counter offer that she laid out in our last meeting.
Phil DeColigero, I second that.
Okay, so there was a counter offer. Um I want to make sure, again, that we have opportunity to get that out there and back, and we still have an opportunity to get this on the town warrant. So Madam Town Manager, any comment on that?
Um we'll get in touch with the Amazon folks tomorrow, um and let them know that we're making the counter offer. We have till Monday, um to get the agenda item together. Um so we'll do that tomorrow and then get in touch from there.
Perfect. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh any further discussion from the board? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Uh Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Okay, so that is unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you all. Um, all right, we have no other business on our agenda for this evening. So our next meeting is Monday, March 23rd, 2020. My expectation is that it's going to be a meeting that's very similar to what we did tonight. Um, and I wanna thank you all for participating tonight. I think this went very smoothly. Um, we didn't have many barking dogs or anything like that in the background, um, which is perfectly fine if we do, but we didn't, so I think that was, uh, I think it went very smoothly. Um, so thank you all for taking the time and participate, and we'll, um, probably look to do something very similar for our next scheduled meeting on March 23rd. Um, so with that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Um, Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedili, motion to adjourn.
Phil DeColigero, second.
Okay, so we'll call over to Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, thank you. Thank you. Good night.